Morning.
Doesn't appear anybody's calling.
Nobody?
Not yet.
I guess nobody's up.
I think so.
Where is that again?
He's gonna make the right call. Okay.
Is he here?
He told me, I said, you know, I wanna see him. He said, well, um, they're recognizing him. I didn't want to interrupt him. He said to me, come over to the meeting after the meeting.
Hang that up for a second.
I said, he said, he's coming over towards the end of the meeting. So I then sent those texts out. And when I texted Tara, who sent us the information, she said they're recognizing Senator Yardo before. So they're probably doing that now. So he'll come over here after you.
Okay. All right. Good morning, everyone. Ask you to please rise for the opening prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance before we convene into this public meeting. Dear only Father, we thank you for this day. You have granted us and know that you are the God of all creation. In your word, you tell us dry land, seas, plants, and trees are created. Tomorrow, we'll celebrate Arbor Day. We are thankful for your beauty of our trees. From the flowering trees to the one that produce fruits, to the mighty redwoods, we are blessed to enjoy this magnificent part of creation. Our trees provide clean air to breathe, shelter, shade, fruits, nuts, and protect our soils. The leaves provide vibrant foliage every fall that attracts millions to admire your beauty. They provide habitat for our wildlife. A part of your creation is so essential in so many ways, may we take a minute and praise your creations. Lord, you instruct us to respect authority. We pray for our law enforcement, as more difficult than ever in these chaotic times. We are thankful for those men and women who take an oath to protect each of us from the insanity we witness that is prevalent in today's world. Next Tuesday, we'll honor and celebrate the Pennsylvania State Police under their 118th birthday. We pray for these officers and all officers' safety across our land. May each shift end peacefully with these men and women as they seek to keep peace in our community. And on Monday, may we reaffirm our loyalty to our nation as united and recognize the heritage of American freedom as we recognize loyalty day. Let us look at those freedoms that you have blessed us for over two centuries. Let us be thankful for our heritage, so many that have died for those freedoms we share. And Father, this morning, we'll celebrate National Volunteer Week. From the early days of a volunteer army to the present day of the volunteer in so many walks of life, one common theme is the compassion, caring, patient, and love that a volunteer shares with mankind. They have the heart and will to accomplish the mission. We thank you for giving the many millions of volunteers the heart and desire to utilize their talents to accomplish the many missions. Now, as we set to convene our committee this meeting this morning, we ask you for your guidance and wisdom throughout our meeting and the days to follow. These things we humbly ask in your name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance, citizens of the United States of America, and to your beloved with your justice. One nation, under God, indivisible, with the virginity of justice for all.
At this time, we'll convene our Commissioners' Public Meeting and ask for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Can I move to approve?
Have a second.
On first side?
Aye.
Commissioners, I'd like to seek approval to add something to the agenda that was not previously posted. And this would be adding a proclamation that we will present towards the end of the meeting.
Okay. I'll move to approve the amendment of the agenda.
On first side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Okay, public comment on agenda items only at this time?
None online.
None online? Okay.
Okay, proclamation, National Volunteer Month.
Okay, Volunteer Appreciation Month. Whereas since 1974, the month of April has been designated as Volunteer Appreciation Month to recognize and honor the hard work, selfless dedication, and passion of volunteers, as well as the impact they make throughout our nations. Whereas volunteers lend their time, talent, and resources to meet the emotional, physical, and spiritual need of those in our community. And whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot address all nations' problems, and in giving oneself and service to another empowers the giver and receives, represent thereof. Whereas volunteering one's time, talent, and resources has been an integral part of the heritage since the early days of our nation, and it's essential that we continue this tradition to improve the quality of life for all citizens in our community. And whereas the County of Lycoming has an outstanding group of volunteers who give willingly to improve the overall well-being of our citizens as well as our community. And whereas County of Lycoming has encouraged volunteerism among its employees, citizens, partners, businesses, and organizations, volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive county, state, and nation. And now therefore, we, the Lycoming County Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of April as Volunteer Appreciation Month and urge all citizens. Signed by Lycoming County Commissioner Scott Almes for Chairman, Tony Armisar, Vice Chairman, and Richard Maravito, Secretary.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
You know, in the positions that we sit in, we get to see the needs of our community. And we're blessed to be able to witness firsthand the volunteers of these organizations that provide that service. I want everybody to understand that one of the, as far as the youth are concerned in our community, I was at a meeting last night, and one of them said, yeah, this is a nice area, but there's really not too much to do. And I looked at her and I said, oh, on the contrary. I said, go, you're young, intelligent, and you're looking for something to do. And there are hundreds of agencies out there that need your assistance. So volunteer, get involved in your community, and it will be the most rewarding job you've ever had. And she looked at me and she says, I never thought of that. So tell them, tell your grandchildren and your sons and daughters, get out there and volunteer. It's so rewarding. But I've had that.
You know, they always say that when you volunteer, you get more out of it than the folks you volunteer with, and it's absolutely true. It's a, I can't remember what the term is, for something that we say all the time, but it's true. It's true. We just came, the three of us just came from the Conservation District Legislative Breakfast, and part of the ability of all of these entities that Commissioner Misere mentioned to function depends on volunteers. The entire Conservation District Board is made up of volunteers. They review all the work that the staff does, and they vote on whether or not to take action, just like we do. Obviously, there's a staff and there are people there, but the volunteers are critical. The same thing with all of the organizations, and those are the ones that are just quasi-governmental. I mean, there's lots and lots. So that's a good point, Commissioner. There is work to do. There are things that need to be done. And volunteering is a great way to do it. And not only that, volunteering gives one the opportunity to see whether one wants to pursue that more. Maybe as a result of volunteering as a school district or something, or at the library, you find, you know what, I really have a passion for working with kids. So anyway, it's great. I'm glad we recognized it. Thank you to Larry Stout, who's not here today, but Larry brought it to our attention last week, and I can't speak for the other two, but I'd have to say that if he hadn't brought it to our attention, I would not have, I would have not known about it. And so I thank Larry for that, too.
What volunteerism does, it builds communities. It builds communities. And there are so many different organizations looking for volunteers, and I'm involved in some, and I often hear people say, well, I'm just too busy. You know, I got kids to raise, and I just don't have the time. And to me, that's a selfish approach, because everybody has the same amount of hours in a day. You're given 24 hours. It's what you do with it matters. And whether it's being involved in your child's life as a volunteer, or another organization as a volunteer, or even as a senior, you can volunteer maybe an hour a week, or five hours a week, or maybe just a one-time commitment as a volunteer, you know, once a month, or once every six months. You're giving back to your community. You're making it better. You know, my parents instilled in me at a very young age, you know, volunteerism goes a long way. And you're giving back to people that have helped you and helped your friends and your family. So, you know, I've been involved in that throughout my life. It's been a big part of my life. And the reason why is because it's giving back. It's giving back to making my community better, making our county better. And when I talk to their volunteers, you establish friendships, you establish relationships that are long-lasting. They last for a lifetime. And so I encourage people to volunteer, whatever your schedule allows. At the same time, it's needed, so desperately needed. So many of these organizations depend on volunteers. And I've stayed at numerous times, I think I stayed last week. It should be a course that's taught in our schools, where you, you know, take a class for volunteerism, and let that student pick what they choose to volunteer for, whether it's the Red Cross, or whatever it is, the hospital. My mom was a volunteer at the hospital, and she loved it. You know, she loved making patients' days brighter. And she'd come home with stories and relationships, friendships she developed, and she did that in her later years in life. And so there's so many different organizations that you can help and give back. And also, it'd help a student, they might develop a relationship with that organization that could last a lifetime, whether as a volunteer, possibly an employee, and it may keep the student in the area that they're living in by, you know, growing a strong relationship with that volunteer agency. So again, we want to honor all the volunteers, the millions of them, and thank them for their time. Time is a valuable asset, and without them, a lot of things won't get done in this world. So thank you.
Okay, moving on to reports. Kayla, Council's payment cash requirement?
Good morning, Commissioners. Presented for your ratification are invoices due through May 3rd to be paid on April 26th in the amount of $4,119,148.55. The breakdown is as follows. With 14.64% being funded by the general fund at $603,016.66. 15.58% is being funded by grants and other sources at $641,845.47. 12.98% is being funded by RMS at $534,666.42. And 56.80% is being funded by escrow at $2339,620. And for the sake of being transparent, I know that that's a huge invoice number, I wanted to make clarification, that $2284,838 of that is going towards the field closure at the landfill.
Good, that's helpful to know. And that's money that's been put aside from all the loads that are dropped at the landfill. A certain amount gets put aside for each load, so.
Yeah, that comes out of the closure funds.
Right, out of the closure funds. That's helpful to know, Kayla.
Okay, can I motion?
I'll move to approve.
Have a second.
Any questions or comments? Very none? On first side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, information I'll be covering Maya as she's on vacation. We're acknowledging that the county will be requesting bids for the Third Street Plaza roofing, re-roofing project. This is a 2023 budgeted item. Personal actions, Jessica.
Good morning, Jessica.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Director. I am seeking your approval for the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment, subject to the successful completion of background checks and other employment conditions. For the pre-release center, Sarah Barastro, resident supervisor, full-time replacement, hired at 1810 per hour, anticipated to start on May 15th. For the courts, Casey Phillips, hired as an administrative specialist, full-time replacement at 1685 per hour, anticipated to also start on May 15th. And for the prison, Danielle Gabbard is transitioning to a part-time status, which is a new position for the prison at $20 per hour. He will not exceed 1,000 hours in a year, and he's anticipated to transfer on this Sunday, April 30th.
Okay, can I motion?
I'll move to approve.
Have a second.
On first side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to your action items. Commissioner, seeking your approval on an amendment to the agreement with Citizen and Northern Bank. This is the formal agreement. Last week, we approved the proposal. So this changes the terms for our cash account and our sweep account, interest rates, and all that.
Okay, can I motion?
I'll move to approve.
Have a second.
Okay, on first side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
We thank our friends at CNN or colleagues for working with us on that, mutually beneficial.
Okay, Commissioner, seeking your approval on the reappointment of Jason Fink as chairman of the Lycoming County Industrial Development Authority effective 1 January 2023 to 31 December 2023.
Okay, can I motion?
I'll move to approve.
Have a second.
On first side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried, I want to also thank Jason Fink for coming forward, sir.
5.3, Commissioner, seeking your approval on a letter of intent with Pennsylvania College of Technology. This is the intent to purchase several properties. One is a building and property on Rodney Drive, one is property on Third Street, and one is property on Fritz Station Road. And with that intent, also to provide a grant for police vehicles to Penn College.
Okay, can I motion?
I'll move to approve.
Have a second.
Okay, so this is exciting news, because this is a letter of intent for the property up next to the transfer station, so that we can expand the transfer station. It's a letter of intent for the property over on Fritz Station Road, which would be our conversion property, so that we can do the conversion with the property at the golf course. And lastly, this is property that we've explored at 3341 Wahoo Drive, which would be the further, the future home of the Coroner. We've been up to that site with the Coroner. We've examined it. We think it's an excellent opportunity to purchase. Right now, we have an appraisal being done on the property. They recently had an appraisal, so we have a very good idea what the property's worth. It's definitely affordable. It's a very well-constructed building, and it's exactly what the needs of the Coroner is. So we look forward to a potential sale of that property moving forward. Comment?
Yeah, no, this is, this is good news, because it takes care of three things that we've been working on for a long time. The RMS has really wanted to make the changes that they need to make there. We've wanted to sell that land around the golf course, and of course, we've wanted to get a place for the Coroner. So it's nice that we've been able to work with Penn College on providing a mechanism for us to get the land, or for them to get some of the things that they need also. And it's a good example of government and a private institution that's heavily subsidized. Obviously, the state gives a lot to the facility, working together to try to help the community. So we're, I think we're pleased with that.
There are three I want to note, that the property at Wahoo Drive is, it was owned by the college, so taxes are being exempt by us purchasing. It stays the same way. The property we were looking at previously, which is now under lease to a manufacturer, keeps those, that property on the tax rolls. So if we would have purchased that, it would took off the tax rolls. This way, we're purchasing a property that's already off the tax rolls, and at the same time, we're very happy for the present owner of the property we're looking at previously, that they have a tenant, and that is currently under tax rolls. And we have some more manufacturing in the city as a result of that, of building being occupied. So we're happy for that owner. At the same time, we're excited about this property.
I think that was a very good comment and observation. I'd just like to add a couple things. And you're seeing a lot of development, revitalization with the old city, the gateway. We have two colleges, two institutions in our community that have been tremendous partners for the redevelopment of our area. And we can't thank them enough. We can't thank, you know, Dr. Trackdo, my coming college, for his vision of what our, well, what his college is, how his college is going to be presented, come off the Beltway, and to be able to help us, help the city, you know, revitalize that area. Very critical. It's beautiful when you walk down there. As well as Penn College and Davy Jane, for her vision and what she's done for us as well.
And Mike Reed.
And Mike Reed, yes. They've always been great partners for the County of Lycoming. I would like to make one other comment regarding the Coroner's, and after reading the paper today. You know, it's not easy governing. It's just not. And you can tell it's an election month because of the comments that are being, you know, posted. But I want to assure the naysayers that every Board of Commissioners, for a very long time, have been trying to find a home for the Coroner. We just have differences of opinions. And, you know, my job is to protect the taxpayers and find solutions that are going to be the most economical solutions for the taxpayers. And not be, we can't afford the Taj Mahal. We could afford the Taj Mahal if we knew that what was going in there could pay for itself. But that was not going to happen. A forensic center is not going to pay for itself. Bringing in a pathologist is not going to pay for itself. It's going to cost us. If it was going to pay for ourselves, we would have done it 10 years ago. But it won't. We don't have the bodies to afford that. If, if it was profitable, don't you think that one of the three hospitals around here would have brought in a pathologist? For certain. You know? I think we've worked hard to find those locations. Many of the locations that we looked at, he turned down. Not us. Coroner turned down. And, you know, I just want to dispel what's going, being said out there, that it's, we did not treat him very well. I think he has one of the toughest jobs in the county. No question. No question. I, he, when you say that you aren't called 24/7, you aren't called 24/7. You are out every, every minute of the day. They never know when they're going out. But for sure, they're going out. So I was glad that Penn College, that their board approved this. We took Chuck out to get his blessing before, you know, we said anything. So I think it's going to be a nice home for him. I think there's, if a forensic center comes to Lycoming County, they have two acres there. I mean, they can build, you know? And to your point about keeping that property, lundy property, taxable property, is a big point. It's a lot of money that came in, and so I'm happy, I'm happy to see that he finally got a home.
Plus, we have a new manufacturer in the area as a result.
Yeah.
That's, that, now that, that building. And again, this is, this is a good building for the Coroner. You mentioned excessive land there that we can expand on, we need to. But it meets his immediate needs, and it's, it's been a focus of this board to find him a home. It's been a challenge at times. It would have been great to have a, a building for multi-use, but when it's not affordable and, and we can't pay more for a building than what the appraisal says. That's, that's the way the law works. And so we've been blessed to find this location, and we look forward to helping Chuck get into that location and meet his needs.
I, I won't dwell on, on the past, although my colleagues seem to want to, but we certainly would never have paid more than something was appraised, and that wasn't the, the goal at all. And so I, I just say, listen, constituents, in my view, always just make decisions based on, on what they, they conclude, and so they'll, they'll do that. And I don't think we need to dwell on it. The one thing that we should let people know, it's $1,286,000, these, these three properties. There's going to be, in addition to cash, there's going to be purchase of various vehicles for Penn College. I mean, this is all in the document that is obviously a public document, as a way to get to the purchase price. The, the, it is good news on all three fronts, as I said, because the RMS really needs to do the work there to make that transfer station more effective and safer. This is the land right next to it, and in particular, when they're bringing in 18-wheelers and so forth. The, the land down by the golf course is, is land that we hope we can get a developer interested in, possibly building additional housing. And then, of course, the, the Coroner's building up on Wahoo Drive, we, we won't, it's two acres. We're not sure whether, some of the other things we sought to do, like central processing, magistrate fry, records retention, not clear whether we'll be able to do it, but it's something that we'll have to, we'll have to look at. What was the fourth thing we were trying to do? Records retention, magistrate fry, central processing?
DUI.
DUI. I still think, I hope the three of us can still find a way to do something with central processing and DUI. I think it would be a tremendous asset for our law enforcement, and I know that we've talked about it numerous times, and maybe we can still either look at that building or do, do what we can do to, to help ease the burden. But it is good news. The three of us have worked hard to try to, to, to get to this place, and, and it was fortuitous that, that the college was in a place where they wanted to, to sell it. And I have to give some credit to Pat Marty for being tuned in to what's going on in the community. Pat is the one who came to us and said, gentlemen, you know, we have an idea for a, a place for the Coroner. Pat's ability to be in touch with what's going on in the community is a tremendous asset, not just for the college, but obviously for, for the community in general, because, you know, it helped us to come to a place where we could bring the Coroner there, and it, and it would work. You know, the whole angst about the Coroner's situation has been that it's been going on so long, and we've seen over the course of the 12 years, the opioid. It, it was just kind of coinci, I don't know if it's coincidental, maybe it highlighted the need more, the development of the opioid crisis, where we saw so many overdoses. And then, of course, the pandemic.
And now that's back.
Yeah, and now it's back. So, so the nice thing about this building that I think all three of us are excited about is the fact that he can get in there really, really soon. So again, I, I won't dwell on the past, you know, there's no point to it, but we can, we can certainly feel good that the people in the community are going to have a place for the Coroner.
I just want to make, I don't say this is a correction, but you've mentioned central processing, which we, we feel is needed, but it's more central booking.
Yes, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. Thank you for correcting me.
Yeah, well, no.
I will call a correction.
There's a difference, there is a difference in central processing and central booking.
No, you're right, absolutely. And you know what? We, we should explain that to the public so that they understand. Yep.
How many places do you think we've visited, looking at different sites?
Well, I, I want to thank, I want to thank, we've had a lot of phone calls, and, and we've had people reach out to us to examine different buildings. And I want to thank those people because we have checked out those buildings, and either it didn't work out, or Chuck didn't feel it was an appropriate site. He felt maybe it was too far one way in the county, too far another way in the county, too far east, too far west. But, you know, for the, the public to be tuned in and want to help solve the problem, that's what it's about. It's about getting the public the opportunity to be engaged so they can help us with situations. And, and, and we hadn't, you know, since I've been here, dozens of those phone calls, and we've looked at those buildings. Either they weren't big enough or whatever reason. But I want to thank those constituents, and at the same time, we have, you know, just in my, my three years, we've probably gone through at least a dozen buildings, and you guys have went through, there are more buildings prior to that. But Pat reaching out to us and saying, listen, this is a good opportunity. We can include this in, in the package that we're working on. You know, I kind of, I'm a big baseball guy, and I kind of referenced this to a, a winter trade meeting, and what can, what can we provide for the college in this, this letter of intent? At the same time, what can they provide for us? And so it's, it's, it's great because we have three properties here. At the same time, you know, we're looking at helping them with two police cruisers, and it's, it's affordable, it's within our budget. And, and they're exploring another opportunity with us over at the, the Third Street Plaza, too, which would be exciting, too, for the community, so.
We would be remiss if we did not thank the Coroner and his staff for their patience, their perseverance and their commitment. We need to understand that when Commissioner Maser says they're on 24/7, it's 2:00 in the morning, it's January 25th, it's negative five degrees out, and you got to go from your home, go get your truck, which has been sitting out, and it's a diesel engine, and you hope to heck that it's going to start, and you've got it plugged in. Then you get in that engine, you drive to a place where somebody has OD'd or somebody has cut someone up with a knife. There's blood, there's fentanyl, there's all sorts of stuff around, or they've shot. And now you've got to make sure that that scene is secure until the police, if the police have not arrived yet. And in the process, you manage to get on your clothes, these various and sundry items, and it gets into your vehicle. And then you got to go back home at 4:00 in the morning, you got to get your clothes, throw them in the machine, make sure your kid doesn't touch anything, make sure you don't transfer anything from the blood. God forbid you transfer the fentanyl or anything else. And you get to bed, and then you got to get up four hours later because you got to get in here. And meanwhile, this goes on for 10, 12 years. So we do thank Chuck, and we shouldn't underestimate the, the patience. Some people would have just said, I am not going to be a coroner anymore. Some deputies would have said, I am not going to take the job. So I do want to thank him and his staff because they have been patient with all three of us and with prior boards of commissioners. And the, the fact is that we now have a place for them to call home, to not have to go out and have the truck stored. There's a garage where they can keep the truck stored.
They can do that immediately.
They can do that immediately. There is, there is facilities for showering and facilities for changing and everything like that, and we're going to continue to make it. And one of the things that, that we're looking at is that there's a space that may be large enough. You know, our first responders need a place to train, and they used to do it over at Trade and Transit, too, and that building now has become very expensive. How much is it an hour? 300 or 250?
250 to 300 an hour.
An hour to use. And so they need a location, and we're hoping we can do something at this new building where there'll be a space where they can do that. So anyway, we thank Chuck and his staff.
You forgot to stop there, this, the adverse conditions they were working in.
Yeah.
Even prior to them going home, and it could be in the middle of the night, they're stopping at a car wash.
Right.
To wash everything down.
In, in zero, they're stopping in?
Yeah, which is.
In, in suburb.
Can we get a motion?
I'll move to approve.
We had, we had a motion in a second.
Get a vote.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, yes, sir.
One quick question.
Yes.
When we went through these numbers, this $100,000, which the state gave to him, where's that transposing to this number?
That is for build-out and operation. It's not for purchase.
You should have put, but you should have mentioned that into the statement.
There's actually money, we already have a million and a half dollars in the budget.
No, 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 the $100,000 the state gave to Jason Fink.
I think it's, I think it's build-out, operation.
That's what it's going to be.
Yeah, Commissioner Flick, Commissioner, I mean, Representative Flick.
Yeah, he, Mr. Flick, so you should understand that they should have put that into the public statements.
All right, well, so that, well, so the thing, well, so what they write, that's a different set of money. This is, we're only concerned about the county.
This came right from the, from the, the representative. So what I want to know is, why wasn't this instituted into this? So all that money is coagulated in that area. Is that going for equipment?
Yeah, then this is for the purchase, and that other money is for equipment slash construction.
That's all I'm asking the question for. Thank you so much.
We, we have a million and a half dollars in the Coroner's budget already for the purchase.
Right.
That's been in the budget for, going from one year to the next year, the next year, the next year.
I just wanted to emphasize that $100,000, which the state gave.
All right.
Okay.
5.4, Commissioner, seeking your approval on the Second Amendment to the Emergency Watershed Protection Grant Agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection. This is the, is EWP grant-funded, and what this amendment does is it changes the grant amount from $50,149.43 to $90,782.34, which is an increase of $40,632.91.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
All right, 5.5 and 6, Malik.
Morning, Malik.
Good morning. I'm seeking your approval for Act 37 agreement with Family Promise of Lycoming County, an amount of $50,000. This is for their homeless prevention services.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
We want to thank Family Promise for what they do in our community. We know there's a homeless issue in, in our county, and we thank you, thank this agency for attacking that.
And Malik, these funds are coming from the state fair funds, correct?
Yes.
Yep. So this is the, the money that comes off the top of the gas drilling goes into the, part of it goes into the fair, the Pennsylvania Housing Finance, and, and they send us the money back, and that's where this is coming from. We do thank Family Promise.
Yeah, Malik, maybe you can get us an answer to this question. So when Act 13 was established in 2012, that fair fund, it came off the top of the pyramid, okay, for P H Bay. And I read an article just recently, and I can't remember whether it was in the Sun Gazette or New York, I'm not sure, but it talked about gas wells and having to cap them because our tran, our pipelines are at capacity. So in the act, is where the, the initial four years, the initial first year is where counties make the most money, okay? And then it starts to reduce until the fifth year, then it was only down to $10,000 for the next 10 years, okay, as far as revenue. My question is, when they cap a well, okay, does the clock stop?
I'm unsure.
Find that out for us, please.
I will, yes.
Because we certainly want the clock to stop because there's production, revenue within there, not much, but there is, but it's the initial impact. And I'm not, I don't remember right now if that, if that clock stops. If it's, if it's running, then we're losing revenue on, on the drilling, so.
I'll find that out for you.
Thank you.
Are you, are you asking if it stops if they stop drilling? Or if they cap it?
So they're drilling, and if the, the transmission lines are in full of capacity.
Right, right.
Then they have to cap the well.
Right.
Okay, well, what does that capping do as far as the revenue? Because the initial legislation, I think it was 92,000 cubic feet was the threshold. If it wasn't producing that, then there would be no revenue.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
If you're talking about, once it's operational, the amount of years and then where the formula is down?
15 years, it was 15 years, yeah. But if it, if they cap it, they're not making any money, is it still running?
Right.
You know? And, and we certainly hope not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other comments? All fair side?
Aye.
All right, so Carrie.
Next agenda item, I'm seeking your approval for the subrecipient monitoring agreement with Step Inc. in the amount of $210,000. This is part of the 2022 fair funds. This is for their homes in need program.
Can I motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie.
All right, next for comment.
We want to thank the Brigadier General again for her visit to Coming County on Tuesday. It was great to have her meet our Director of Veteran Services, Mike McMunn. She then went over to, as you saw in the paper, thank you for the paper article, Pat, and she greatly appreciated the coverage because it helps make veterans aware of the services that are out there for them, so. It was a good awareness, and she'll be back. She really enjoyed visiting here. One thing she had said, she never visited Williamsport before, even though she has a daughter at Park Haven University, but she was impressed with the area, and she said she'd definitely be back for many more visits.
We just, we just returned from a Conservation District Legislative Breakfast this morning, and all the volunteers and, and the districts themselves, what they do for our community and farmers. What I'd like to, to touch base on is the fact that we all want clean water, we all want clean air. There's, there's no question. They're guaranteed in both constitutions. But there, there has to be some type of common sense with the regulations. And Senator, you're always bringing out the fact that some of the costs, we are not going to meet the deadline of the Chesapeake Bay, and that was, deadline is 2025, where they can start to, you know, place heavy fines on us. So three states are involved in that, that's Pennsylvania, Maryland, and Virginia. And the Chesapeake Bay, it wasn't the commission, the foundation sued EPA and said that they wanted Pennsylvania to do their fair share, that we weren't upholding the agreement, which they're probably correct. We're not, we're not going to argue that. But the point of the matter is that these regulations are going to be very, very, very costly, and we've, we've seen that with our sewer and water rates. Lycoming County is, is really in a good spot as far as the sewer, but, but the rates are high. And there's communities like Lairdsville, we just saw those rates. It's going to be $110 a month, okay? But there's other, other factors that are going to come into play here shortly, and will, which will elevate the regulations, elevate the cost. And I ask that these agencies of the government be regulated, okay? They usurp the power of our elected officials, and in nowhere in that constitution, in the beginning, our founding fathers said, we the people will be part of that government. And we'll, we should always have a say, and our concerns should always be heard. And in many cases, they're not. And regulations by agencies that usurp the elected officials? And regulations by agencies that usurp the elected officials' power are, are, I'm not saying they're not vital, they are, all right? But they can't treat every municipal, they can't treat every state as the same and pain us as a broad stroke of brush. Because when it comes to Pennsylvania, you know, our community, we're blessed with, with pretty good water, okay? But those regulations that they're going to implement for the violators such as Lebanon and Lancaster, York.
Yeah, he mentioned, um, there's more head of cattle in, in the county of Lancaster than there is in the entire state of Maryland.
Right. Well, they're the ones that are contributing eighty percent of the pollution to the Chesapeake, and yet we're going to have to follow the regulations at the same cost. I mean, some of the things that we're doing makes no sense. There's no cost benefit ratio. And, and I always advocated that, yeah, we, we all need to do our fair share, okay? But I would rather you tax me ten dollars instead of a hundred and send my ten dollars down to where it's needed the most. It's going to have the biggest impact. But what I'm reading, they're not listening. They're not going to listen. We will be in that broad stroke of the brush. People get involved, speak out, you have to speak out, you have to be informed, because what you're going to be paying is more than you're going to be paying in taxes, and you're probably doing it already by the goods and services that had to be raised in cost to cover it. So, um, that's my plea to, to our constituents. Understand what's going on and, and make it hurt. Make sure you call your legislators, because there's not much we can do but comply here at the county level.
Thank you. Any other?
No.
Okay. Public comment?
Yes.
Please come up and state your name to the record.
Good morning, Bill Fenderson from Woodward Township. Last week, uh, we were, uh, listened to it online, haven't got a chance to get down, but Tony opened up a small, small box of rocks here, just a major box of rocks, nonprofit organizations. So with that, if I may, I'd like to give you a copy of everything that's happening throughout the state, and I will tell you that nonprofit organizations are taxable, okay? Lot of research into this, and unfortunately, things have happened that should not have happened, but unfortunately did. Here's one part of it, this, this one legislation, it happened. This is also in the Senate's hands. You'll see that everything is spelled out and everything's going on.
Thank you.
These large hospitals, they have a tendency to do things that are not, not equipped to have done, to make money hand over fist. Everything, everything put in place on this, they'll show you what the dollar descents are, they'll tell you that, you'll see that some of these institutions make more money than the county has. Their CEOs are very well paid, it's a profit for business. Everyone needs healthcare, unfortunately, they get, they're subsidized by the federal government and state. They make mucho money. The insurance companies, in turn, pay their fair share. And the problem with this is, recently, last week, now we're going to probably lose a thousand people or more, maybe a million, off Medicaid, because we're not getting the stuff put in place like it's supposed to be put in place. These hospitals are raking us over to coals, all of them. I don't know if anyone of the commissioners took note last night, or yesterday, when Geisinger got bought, I will tell you that after doing some research last night, they're going to buy eight more. And what's going to happen is they're going to use them for emergency facilities, okay? They want you to go to a doctor and everything first and see if they can treat that before you go to the hospital. In a sense, it's good. So on the flip side of this, that means there's going to be non, more nonprofit organizations built. They won't be sitting on their own ground. So that, that's some of the spiel. If you look at everything that happens throughout the United States and the state of Pennsylvania, if you look at the population ratio in Lecombe County right now, the last time it was stated, they were saying a hundred and thirteen thousand people. In twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and going into this year, we've lost almost three thousand people, either death or moving away. So as I may say, to say, ask the commissioners, so with that being said, how close are we to be in a sixth-class county? How close are we? And with that happening, with all these projects that are being put into and being built, who's going to take care of all the stuff after it's being started and we lose our funding? It's the common, it's going to be our taxpayer dollars paying for this. And our county's made up of a lot of people who are retired, living on fixed incomes. We can't do it. We can't do it. So you look at all this stuff and understand that, yes, you guys can only do what you can do, but unfortunately, you are, as far as I'm concerned, you are the geographical body who represents the county. I don't see the city giving you any parking, do they? They don't give you no parking. So if you want to come to a meeting, if you're ADA, you can't get in anywhere, you've got to go someplace, you've got to travel yourself wherever. Can't park anywhere because of no parking. So if, if we sell executive Plaza, so you're going across the street, I was still over there the other day, on Tuesday, going over to voting machines, getting them ready for election, no place to park. There's no place to park. How do we restitute, how do we do that? You would think being the county seat, okay, why can't the city make sure the county seat, the governing body of this county, has parking? Why is that? Any ideas? I ask you, is there any ideas? Scott, you, you've been here for long, you know, you've been here for a long time. It costs money to park someplace, you've got to pay that for all the people that work here, correct?
We don't, we don't pay for parking.
You don't pay for parking?
No.
So in other words?
I, for, for thirty years, I either parked up the street or parked down behind letters.
Yep, so, so.
I had to pay.
Right, right.
I had to pay my own parking.
Well, so you want to say it to you is, so when you work for the county, you're taking more money out of your pocket just to work for here. So why is that? Why wouldn't they take, understand that's the way we should have different things happen? But with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Tony, thank you for the service, we're a pleasure, I believe, and Rick, again, thank you. I wish you well in what happens.
Thank you.
But we need to have good support, and we, we look at these nonprofit organizations. If anyone wants to look at these nonprofit organizations, I will tell you, just go in there and do a search, you will be flatter gassed, everyone has a nonprofit organization, everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, any other public comment at this time?
Can, can I make a quick comment on this?
Yes.
So, you know, um, the Kaiser deal, i- if you look, in, in twenty eighteen, the head of Kaiser was paid eighteen million dollars. He was the highest paid CEO of a nonprofit in the nation, and the top ten CEOs of healthcare facilities all make north of seven million dollars. I don't think the issue, Kaiser has revenues of ninety-five billion dollars, right? For me, the issue isn't whether or not someone is worth eighteen million dollars or seven million dollars, that's not the issue, because if you're responsible for four hundred thousand employees, however many employees they have, and revenues of ninety-five billion.
It's three hundred.
The question is whether they should, whether the organization should be entitled to a nonprofit status. That is the issue.
That's correct.
So we can't get sidetracked about saying, well, you're not going to be able to attract people to these jobs unless you pay, pay that's commensurate with the private sector. I understand that, that, that isn't the issue at all. The issue is, if there's enough money, and when I was in the state legislature, there was a bill that said that if, if organizations were paying, nonprofit organizations were paying more than six times or seven times, I forget the number, the median salary, right? So they have enough money to pay property taxes. That is really an important issue that constituents need to get engaged with, because the tax burden, and what Bill mentioned is true, if you look at the Department of Revenue, the number of entities that are now filing as a nonprofit status has gone up, and the for-profit, whether they are accounting firms, or law firms, or manufacturing, or real estate businesses, or, or floor and tile businesses, they're all for profit, they all pay taxes on the real estate, the business privilege tax, the sales tax. Nonprofits don't pay sales tax, right?
Nope.
They don't pay sales tax. So if they build a building that costs a million dollars or ten million dollars, they're not paying sales tax. That tax burden falls on a smaller, smaller number of people. So it's not that we don't like the nonprofits, it's not that we don't think they provide an important mission, that's not the point. The two places where the salaries are really sort of out of whack is the healthcare industry and the higher education industry, right? The, 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 the major, uh, whether it's Cornell or Penn State or all these places. So it isn't that we want to villain, villain, uh.
Vilify.
Thank you. It's not that we want to vilify the institutions, that is not the point. And the point is not that the head of Kaiser or the head of a, a place like UPMC with Steve Johnson, not that they're not fantastic, are basically on call twenty-four seven. When you're the head of a hospital system like this, you're basically on call two. It's not that they're not worth the money they're paid, that's not the point. The point is that we cannot put the tax burden on a smaller number, especially in rural communities where the population is growing older, where the incomes are fixed, and where there's really no way. Uh, so anyway, that's something for us to think about.
And Bill, Bill, Matt did a quick research, uh, fifth-class counties are ninety K, ninety thousand to a hundred and forty-four.
Depending upon different geographical areas, how it's spread out, right now, we're at ninety-two people per square mile.
Bill, we agree with you, the law needs to be changed, but we, we don't have the authority to change it. It starts at the state level.
Oh, oh, wait, let me correct this. Read that article, and you'll see that a county filed this.
Okay, well, I'll look at it.
Yeah, look at that, understand that, no one, no one's trying to do, the problem is, we have so much bare land here, once there's a building up, it's taxable with the building on, once the building comes down, you pay ground tax, okay? So we're losing value. You take this drug, if you guys just all go around Lecombe County, look at all the vacant land, they tore buildings off of, they're paying property taxes only on the vacant land, and that's, and that's if they can find it, people that own the land.
Right.
I mean, there's a lot of things that step into this thing, I mean, it's astronomical, you know, so that, I just wanted to give that to you, so you had some indication after what Tony said last week, and I said to myself, I know what's going on, I'm going to print this stuff out and make sure you have, are aware of it, but there's a lot of things going on.
Yeah, no, actually, I really thank you for bringing it, because, look, it's one of those things, look, as an elected person running for office, do I want to sit here and attack an institution that's got five thousand employees and the next thing you know, people say, well, jeez, don't put that guy into office? But the reality is that if we don't have an honest conversation about it among ourselves, and I'll be truthful with you, I think if you sat in the boardroom and you talked to the CEOs who are making eighteen million, seven million, or one million, they would say, you know what?
Yeah.
We should pay some property taxes. We should pay it. I mean, obviously, there's a culture that develops on a board where people believe that the mission they're providing as a nonprofit is very important, which it's true, but we've gotten away from what the law was in eighteen ninety-six. I think that's the year, Solicitor, when they wrote the, the nonprofit law, you know, that was Mother Teresa serving soup out of a building, and we've come full circle now. And so unless we are honest with ourselves about what the problems are and not vilify the people or the institutions, because, look, and at the end of the day, when you have a heart attack, you want the best care there is.
Yep.
And, and we're blessed to be able to get that. We have to have an honest conversation because it is, it is hurting us economically, that's it.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other public comment?
Commissioner Rosera was bringing up about the, you know, the Chesapeake, where, and the agencies being out of control, I, you know, totally agree, and I think most people should understand that. Um, yeah, we want to be responsible with our environment around us, but, um, I think, I think a lot of times they're straining out of net while swallowing a camel, you know, they're not, um, I feel like they're really not sincere about what they're doing, it's more about a control mechanism, especially now with what we're seeing in our, in our world around us, you know, we see our farms being, uh, swallowed up, down south, uh, they're seizing farms just for the, um, use to, to make solar fields out of them, or wind farms, and that's just, it's ridiculous. I mean, and that's the kind of stuff has to stop, so, um, I think there's ways to mitigate some of the things that go into the streams from the farmers' fields, but at the same time, you don't, you don't want to keep the farmers from producing, you know, that's the craziest thing. And last night, I was at, to the zoning board hearing, and, um, you know, about the solar farmers proposed, and, of course, they withdrew the application because of technicality, but, um, they'll probably be back. But, uh, that's an instance where, I don't know the whole logistics or anything, but they're using some farmland, and I said to the fellow, as he was leaving, younger guy walked out with him, I said, look, you know, I have no problems if you want to build solar farms, but I think really you should be required to use lots that have trees on them and not use so much of the, of the farmers' fields. And, and I agree with, you know, people being able to use their, their property as they say fit, but we don't want to destroy what's, uh, what's productive for food and, and what's good for the communities around us. So it's going to take some, uh, I think, some more looking at some of these areas and we make more requirements on, because the solar industry and the wind industry, they're all, they're all tax funded. You know, they're coming out of our pockets the way we like it or not, and that's an unfair , uh, market, you know, value. They, they're playing on a, on a uneven playing field, and, and the benefit we get from them hasn't, isn't near what we get from our gas industry, and they continue to tack our gas. So we see the, uh, like I mentioned a couple weeks ago, the gas, uh, proposal, the Renova was shut down because of environmental nut jobs, and, and some of those, our tax money is funding some of that, because it, they all work together, you know? So we have to really, I think, consider, and I, I see where America's lost its way from its foundation, of course, you know, I say it every week, and, and you know that, but in Luke six, nine to ten, Jesus is talking to the peoples in the synagogue, says, I ask you, is it lawful to do good or to do harm on the Sabbath? And that occurs any day, of course, but this, because they're in Jude, uh, to save a life or destroy it. Well, if we're decent, you know, Christ says we're here to save life, and our great, you know, with the, uh, with our volunteerism and stuff, that's what it's all about, saving life and making it easier for people to live and, and prosper. But, but if we're here to destroy it, we're not doing the, the will of God, and it's beyond me how there's people that claim to be Christians and will support abortion and support transgenderism for especially kids and operations unless a person has the problems and they're older and they can understand the ramifications of it, but the, uh, that whole industry with, with, um, with abortion, it's destructive, and even, even when people get trained, they can't produce life because they're neutralized, you know? But there's some of my thoughts, and I just think we just really need to take and look at ourselves and see where we're at in front of a holy God, and he'll, he'll help us if we're sincere about turning to him.
Thank you, Tom. Any other public comment at this time?
Hey, online.
Not online, but could, here we go.
We have a special amendment to the agenda today. We'll invite our friends in here and, uh, honored to read a proclamation, Mark Madden, a tribute to twenty-nine years of continuous service for Penn State Extension. Whereas Mark is the Client Relationship Manager for Area Three for Penn State Extension, which includes Tioga- which includes Tioga, Bradford, Susquehanna, Lycoming, Sullivan, and Wyoming Counties. Mark is a 1986 agronomy graduate of Penn State University with an Environmental Resource Management minor. Whereas Mark has worked for Penn State Extension since 1994, providing agronomy, water quality, and more recently, energy development programming with an emphasis on private water supplies and its impacts on agriculture and landowners. And whereas immediately prior to Extension, he worked for the Bradford County Conservation District under the Chesapeake Bay Nutrient Management Program, promoting best management practices and administering the Financial Assistance Program. After his time with the Chesapeake Bay Program, he was a crop consultant with the Subra Crop Management Association. And whereas he currently resides on the family property in asylum township of Bradford County with his wife Kelly, a schoolteacher, at Towanda Area School District. They have two daughters. One is a Bloomberg University graduate, a first-year kindergarten teacher, and the other is a 2013 Penn State graduate who received her JD in May, in May of 2017 from Delaware School of Law.
Used to be a farmer assistant solicitor as well.
She was, and she worked at the McCormick Law Firm.
Is that in the...
No. We're going to add that. She also lived in one of our buildings. But we won't put that in there either. Now therefore, the Commissioners of the County of Lycoming hereby proclaim Thursday, April 27th, 2023, as Mark Madden Day. In honor of his unprecedented 29 years of dedicated service to Penn State Extension in Lycoming County, we encourage all citizens to join us in celebrating his many years of outstanding service to our community. Signed by Lycoming County Commissioner Scott L. Metzger, Chairman Tony R. Messer, Vice Chairman, and Richard Maravito, Secretary. And we are so thrilled that you came here today. We are... You were being honored at Senator Yaw's office, I understand. And it's fantastic to see so many people who have intersected with your life over the last 29 years. Your wife, your kids, I mean, I, this was a lot of juggling for them to, to come up from kindergarten and law practice, and all the people here in the community. So we just want to say congratulations. We are going to miss you very much. We're going to come and visit you in Bradford County. And we just know you, Mark came in at an interesting transition for Penn State Extension. I've known Mark through Penn State Extension and through the Conservation District. But there was a transition going on of trying to actually get more resources to our communities through Penn State. And we changed the council, and I said last night, we had a meeting, I said that it has really gone very well, and we've actually been able to energize and get more participation, I believe, out of, of the community. And also, the flip side of that is we've been able to get more resources to the community. And at the end of the day, that's what Penn State is trying to do. They're trying to use all the knowledge and the skill and the experience they have at the School of Agriculture and the other parts of Penn State, driving it down so that the person who's on that farm, or the person who's trying to do something in 4H with our kids, keeping our kids out of trouble, that they have a path, they have the resources to do their job. So we thank you, and, and I'll, I'll pass it off to my colleagues here for any comments.
So, so Mark, Commissioner here is just recently on RV, and he's retired. He's going to retire, so he says he's going to show up in your driveway. Be careful. We've all seen the movie Christmas Vacation with the RV that pulls into the driveway. So when he shows up and wants to stay for a month, be careful.
I have hookups. And he's renting it out as well.
Thank you, gentlemen. It's certainly been a pleasure working with you.
Come to the podium, because we are live streaming here across the world.
So, yeah, thank you, gentlemen. Again, it's, it's certainly been my pleasure working for Penn State Extension these last three decades or so. I mentioned to some folks previously here today that sort of chuckled at myself once in a while on my way home after gratifying day's work that they actually paid me to do this, right? So there's just a tremendous amount of gratification and satisfaction you have working with, you know, landowners, producers, whatever the case may be. I've enjoyed the opportunity the last five and a half years, five years or so, getting to know our, our public leaders and our elected officials. And a great deal of respect for the time and effort that, that all the commissioners I work with across the six counties. It's clear to me that, you know, we have a number of people that are genuinely concerned about their community and the people that live in those communities, and it's to be commended. Thank you very much for your service, and thank you for today.
Thank you.
We definitely agree with you. Does anyone want to come up, Tara? Or make any comments? Just feel free to.
It's my privilege. Thank you so much for making this possible. We just came out of Senator Yaw's office as well and shared the same. It's really a privilege to watch Mark work. He has given us heart and soul. You get to see him at work. I've got to see him through a little bit of a different lens. He's the most humble leader I know. And so it's hard for him. He actually, he doesn't like to be put in the limelight, but this is one time when we celebrate Mark and the impact he's had, not just on your county, but at the entire state. His work will live on, and we'll get to kind of interact with him. He's committed to continue to give his time as a forestry steward, as part of the, that organization he's going to take a leadership role in. So just like Mark Madden always does, he's going to find ways to continue to give back to his community. He'll also give time to Extension as an advocate. He's, he's committed to help us with positioning Extension to continue to give us advice on what we need to be doing. And he'll have a different perspective sitting on the other side of the table. We really look forward to that and thank him for all of his years of service. He has left, again, such a mark on all of us. My team, as a leader, he's one of the best persons I've, I've had the honor and privilege to, to work with, and I've learned so much from him. I appreciate so much that you respect and honor that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. This is yours.
Thank everyone, and all my counterparts that travel across the state to come here. I'm sure they have much better things to do.
You know...
Should we introduce, should he come up?
Absolutely. But I just want to tell you one thing, you know, when you see Mark here with his wife and his children and his grandchildren, our communities are built on making our families strong. And, and, and we can't ever forget that. It doesn't happen by accident. We, the trick is, how do we make our community strong enough for everybody to, to have that opportunity, to have an opportunity to have strong children, strong grandchildren? And then we pass it on, and that's what, that's what Tara's talking about. I mean, Mark's leadership, passing it on. So I, I just think we shouldn't forget that. It's, it's great to see you there with, with the kids. You go look at his smile. Yeah, go ahead. Or introduce themselves.
Would you just, Kylie, introduce yourself?
Andrew Fragerfield, Montgomery County, part of the agronomy team with Penn State.
Okay.
I'm Dwayne Keller. I work out of the Scoobal County Office. I'm part of the agronomy team. I've been here for almost 24 years. Mark was one of the folks I looked up to when I started working for Extension.
Steve Alessi, Client Relationship Manager in Area 4, which is like the Wyoming Valley and Poconos area of Pennsylvania. And I met Mark my first day working with Extension, and it's been an honor to know him ever since.
I'm Ethan Howard. I'm the Client Relationship Manager for Area 5, which is Center Clinton all the way over to Columbia County, so just south of here. Yeah, and I've been on the job here for about 10 months, and working with Mark has been a great, great pleasure.
Chris Hauser, Penn State Extension, Agronomy and Natural Resource Unit Leader. Mark used to work on our unit. He was very humble then, a great guy to work with. He predated me on the agronomy team, so I, Mark's been super. And then we left him, left him get away to the client relationship group, so that's been a great thing too.
Rob Dickinson, I'm a Client Relationship Manager out of Area 2, and I'm based out of McKeen County. And Mark's my mentor, so I don't know what I'm going to do now.
I'm Yana Shear. I'm Client Relationship Manager in Area 8, which is South Central PA. And Mark was actually on my hiring team. So I've looked up to him all these years and followed his example.
Jeff Hackettberg, I'm a Client Relationship Manager. Boy, there are a lot of us, aren't there? I cover counties south of Center County and based out of Mifflin County. And Mark has just been a wonderful influence on our team, a voice of experience, and just a wonderful person to look up to.
Craig Williams, up in Tioga County. I'm your county agent in Tioga County Neighbors, and Mark and I were on our Tioga Bradford team together.
Been around a lot longer than I've been.
So Mark, your, your, your influence and, and it lives on in legacy in each one of these individuals. So you've touched everyone's life and, and we hear the impact you've had. And so thank you for the kind words, everybody, and for traveling here to honor Mark today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Madden Day in Lycoming County. Thank you.
Thank you. We have completed our agenda, so we will be adjourned, and our next meeting will be on Thursday, May 4th. Thank you.
It is a silent trip. It's going to be silent. This, this, the, they want to see you accomplish...